Okay, so I'm gonna call the Public Safety Subcommittee to order September 21st, 6:00 PM. We basically have approvals minutes, which we've got.
August 1st.
So, should we make a motion to approve those? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public speak time. Anybody here to speak on anything other than what is on our agenda?
So, please. I'm at Segal, Mother Street. I'm just, this is just so I can be on record that I'm kind of, I'm disappointed in not getting anything else done about my safety concerns of my area because what was the response that, "Can't do much about bad drivers." And it's like, "Yeah, you guys can ticket bad drivers." It's just getting worse. It's horrendous. The traffic is so outrageous right now and there's a lot more kids walking back and forth.
How about the new shops that have kind of opened up on that Hornet?
You know, it's not terrible. They've all been doing good. You know, they, you know, some, occasionally somebody will park on Clark Street.
It's definitely increased a lot of like the pedestrian traffic, not school.
Yeah, it's not too bad for the businesses dealing with when I'm there. But the traffic, I mean, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday morning, I don't know where these people are going or coming. But it's like non-stop. And occasionally, there is, you know, police presence, but that's, you know, not all the time. And so, yeah, so I just wanna have it on record that, yeah, I really wish something would happen.
I'm a little foggy, 'cause I feel like when we did discuss this, there was a couple ideas on the table.
Yeah.
And one of them, I think, because this was a while ago, was working with the DPW to get maybe cones?
Yeah.
That you could pull out and maybe keep somewhere at Maple School?
Nothing's been done on that.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, so maybe that would be a letter from us to DPW saying-
Because I would even like to even have, you know, those little green turtlenecks?
Yeah, yeah, the one that says, you know-
Yeah, I would be willing to bring that and bring it with me.
Well, Williston has those state law signs.
Yeah.
I don't know why you don't.
Now, what's the difference? Like, some of ours say, "Yield," and others say, "Stop in a crosswalk."
I mean, the law is to stop.
Yeah.
I met individually with some other people from the community just to talk about like crosswalks in general. Because we don't, we haven't really been able to create that kind of culture where drivers really stop at crosswalks.
Kind of like North Carolina.
Yeah.
Like where if you step into those crosswalk, they stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's funny actually, coming back from Ireland, people are like dead stop, you know, like, I mean, it's, you could just do this and everybody stops.
I mean, the first week of school, I was in Clark Street twice with my stop sign in the middle and cars drove, went right through me and waved to me. And I'm going, "No, it's a stop sign."
Did you get a license plate number?
I did get one that actually had gone across Hoyock Street. I reported it. You know, I was for some reason able to whip out my little pad and write everything down. But some of them, they just go by too fast, you know, I can't get it. But, yeah, it's, and, you know, there's, like I said, there's a lot more parents wanting their kids to school this year, which is great that we have more, you know, people, but it's just-
No, you're, you're in a really tough spot.
Yeah, oh, dear. It's horrible.
That is a really, really bad section.
Yeah.
That was one of the things that this other group and I, we kind of talked about, we were like, you know, could neighbors or neighborhoods come together and say, you know, who's got the worst crosswalk or how do we, you know, what's our budget? Can we paint eight of them and how do we figure out which eight are the priority and that kind of stuff, so.
I mean, I know I went to the street, the complete streets, you know, meeting and discussed it with the one group that I was in and, you know, the 25 mile an hour sign to get it to be a flashing sign. Because I, I know nobody, there's very few people that go 25 miles down that street, I know, because when I drive it, it's really slow. But, you know, that's my biggest thing, is coming down, you know, they just, and it's coming up too, coming up, you know, Cottage, you know. Nobody pays any attention to 25 mile an hour signs and sometimes you can't see them.
No, and I'm genuinely concerned that you're gonna be a canary in the dark.
Oh, I know, yeah.
And something bad's gonna happen.
It's, it's, this, this, I mean, it's only been three weeks into school and I've already, it's like, I just keep smiling at these people that just, "Hi," and they wave at me. And that's just, yeah.
I think we should write a letter.
We'll draft a letter.
Because, I mean, it's at the very least having cones.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, when, when you see cones, you think construction or something and people generally-
Slow down.
Slow down.
And let's specifically ask about funding, but do you have the funds to do this? Because if they say, "No, we don't have the money," then we-
Then we have to give them.
Then we talk to the mayor.
We grasp, we need something, we make it happen.
Make it flashing stop signs.
And that was the issue last time.
Well-
With the battery. And I know at certain times of the year going up Cottage Street, they're not gonna see you no matter what, because the sun's-
Well, I think, I think if-
Well, yeah, I know I've got people, and I know that, so that's why I try, you know, I get out quick so that I can get, you know, and I let people go by that haven't seen because of the sun. But, yeah, it's just-
I think if you go back to when crosswalks were invented, they were invented to not interrupt traffic.
I know, it could be either way, honestly. I think a letter, I mean-
That's true, what was that?
We were talking about whether a conversation or a letter would be more appropriate at this point for the DPW.
I think, let's get things in writing.
Yeah.
And, and I think, you know, one of the things that we, we can suggest is maybe they have some older cones or, but you, you said that, if I remember correctly, that maybe previously there might have been cones that were stored at Maple School?
Well, they, I, they got the, the, they have the ones that they, they use in front of Maple, okay? So, that's, they're there.
So, it wouldn't necessarily be like out of the-
Yeah, no, I think they belong to the city, but they, they're in front of the school, yeah.
But one of the points that she brought up is that they just, if you leave them out-
Yeah, they'll go away.
The PD said that they have, just have a really short shelf life.
The DPW's, especially on that corner.
They just cream and they just go nuts.
Right, it would, there'd have to be something that would be placed everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, if the people-
So, I'd also like to add to this other that we do have volunteers willing to schlep them in and out of the streets so it wouldn't, it isn't just putting them out there to get creamed.
So, you're gonna make a draft of this letter? Should we add it to our agenda first?
As long as they're not heavy, I can't remember.
I don't necessarily think we'd have to have it on our agenda to send a letter.
No, I don't know.
No, because we've already discussed it a couple of times, so this is kind of a follow-up, I think.
Yeah, well, that's why, it's like when I went to the City Council two weeks ago.
I would deliver a note from the agenda.
Yeah, I think so, because the DPW and the police were supposed to discuss all this.
Rather than from the committee, if you wanna bring a letter in.
What gets this thing faster? A personal letter does it faster? Or hopefully?
Yeah, just procedurally, I don't want to nail this wrong.
No, you're right.
You're right. I guess that's my new old business. Keep going to different-
No, I mean, I appreciate you coming back and saying it again and again. I'm sorry that there hasn't been no activity.
Yeah, I was hoping over the summer something would have gotten done.
Well, I definitely have seen the police admit it more, I feel like.
And I talk with the chief about it all the time.
I, you know, I even left a message with the chief because the mayor said, "Call him." And, you know, so, yeah, I'd love to ask her, saying, you know, "Let's have some periodic..." I mean, I would, personally, what I would like is something icon, ido, under, you know, not a police cruiser, you know, have a policeman not in uniform watching. I would love to have the DP, Mr. Pips, yeah, Pips. Come down and stand there for an hour and watch, you know, the traffic. I mean, like I said, this year is just horrendous. It has gotten so much worse and I just, wow. Either people are working or they're just, I don't know.
No, and like I said, I really appreciate the conflict. You really own this issue and are oldness to it.
And, yeah, it's like, ah.
All right. So, on to agenda items, school and railroad streets, which now has a public hearing set.
It does not.
The public hearing's being postponed because-
Oh.
We didn't have the language to add to the public hearing.
This was an email that I- Did we do that last night?
But the advertising would have had to go to the Gazette today.
Today, okay.
And I'm sorry, you are?
Don Torri.
Oh, it's your email.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure it was part of the public record. We've been having a lot of like conversations about us receiving emails, but then they're never part of the public record, so this is just trying to make sure that happens. Because I wanna make sure that people's opinions are heard.
And so, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, this came to me from Chief Alberti, who received a number of complaints from parents and folks in the Center Pepin School community about the safety of School Street, especially during pickup and drop-off during the school year and along with trucks that come through to drop off things for Pride and some gas station there. And they, so, the Police Department, Chief Alberti, met with DPW, with Joe, and looked at that whole neighborhood. And the proposal they brought to me was to make School Street one-way from Union to Center. And at the same time, make Railroad one-way from Payson to Center. So, not all of Railroad Street, just the Center Streets. You can still take a left off to Union and then a right off to Center. And their main points of concern for this were alleviating traffic pressures of School Street and the congestion, especially if school buses and trucks are trying to make opposite turns or even parents picking up and dropping off, stopping, waiting, kids crossing the streets. It has that strange elbow in the middle where you kind of lose visibility and it's very narrow. And then Railroad Street, the main concern was public safety vehicles leaving the safety complex and getting into the downtown artery. Because with that two lanes of traffic there and two lanes of parking, it's often congested. Of course, we all know during kind of bagel time was also throughout the day another narrow street with a lot of parking. Officer Kirby's here, representing the Police Department. Does anything you wanna add?
You said it pretty well. I don't have that much, I mean, that's pretty much what I was gonna say, so. We have been getting specifically this, I guess you could say this school year, there's been a few issues with school bus related. Just, there's just a lot of congestion there and there's a lot of, I mean, it's a small street, so, I mean.
And we had conversations, I did, with DPW and the Police Department about, what about just 8:00 to 9:00 AM and 2:30 to 3:30 PM? And everyone agreed that would just confuse things and it would make accidents even more prevalent. And if it was gonna happen, it would be a permanent thing rather than, all right, you know, June and, or July and August, you can go this way, but the rest of it you can't. Or this time you can go and the other times you can't. And so, that's how we went on that proposal. We've had several meetings and articles in Gazette and stuff all over Facebook and I went door to door and nobody was home. And I know Mr. Torri's gonna speak, he lives in that neighborhood and there was no-
And you, you were gonna contact everybody who was like kind of in a clutter? What kind of feedback did you get? Nobody was home or?
I never got contacted, so.
Yeah, when I went door to door, I reached no residents. I spoke with Tandem, a couple of the owners of Tandem, they both said, whatever the city decides is best.
Oh, great.
The number one question I've gotten from residents and, and business owners is how it would affect parking. And if wouldn't, there'd still be two lanes of parking on Railroad, they would just all face the same direction.
They could still park on both sides of the street.
And it'd just be one lane traffic rather than two lanes of traffic. I haven't heard back anything from the folks at Pride, the owner.
I called them yesterday and she didn't seem to know what she knew anything about.
I popped in there and spoke to somebody, I'd have to let you see who it was.
I called the corporate office.
Oh, okay.
She, the assistant, which is the board, but the, the, and that was yesterday, we didn't know.
Yeah, so that's why we've had, we wanna keep having public hearings and there'll be a public hearing in front of the full council and all that. You guys got Mr. Torri's email?
I did.
So, anything you wanna add?
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, so now, what happens in the morning, because I live there? People from the plains or Main Street area, they come in, they go down Center Street, they cut down School Street, and they go to Pride. So, if you eliminate those, you know, they're either gonna go, they're gonna just keep on Main Street and up Park Street and back up. Because once Pride gets filled, heaven forbid they don't get their coffee. And it's just gonna be, it's gonna, you're gonna, I would say you need a traffic study to see where these people are gonna go instead of going down School Street. I can stand there and count the cars. Has anybody counted how many cars go in the morning on School Street going from Payson to Pride? I think there's more going from Payson to Pride than there is from Union to Payson. See, they, they, everybody that comes down, I mean, not Payson, Center, everybody that comes down to Center is avoiding the center of town. They come down Center and they sneak over to Pride. Now, you're gonna make them go to the Center and come down Union and go to Pride. But I would, I'd be willing to bet that there's more people coming from Center Street School in the morning going to Pride than there are from Union Street going to Center Street. So, you're gonna eliminate all those cars. Where are those cars gonna end up?
Union Street.
Yeah. And Park Street and back up, and back up.
And that still wouldn't preclude them though to go down Payson and then go down, pass Tandem to Union and go that way.
Take a left, you would never take a left onto Union Street. If, if I was gonna make any change, I would put on the end of School Street and Union Street, no left turn. Because you get beside, and same thing with Payson. Because that's at least white enough for two cars, but if one car is more towards the right at the end of Payson, I mean, at the end of Railroad,
Okay.
you can't take a left. They used to wait in there to take a left. You aren't gonna take a right. You're gonna sit there forever.
Do you know if the CPA committee meeting is scheduled to be in this room then?
I believe it is at 6:30.
Okay.
So, and, and-
So, I have a question.
Chief, his thinking, and he's at conference today or something, I believe, is you get that safe, the problem you're describing about trying to turn left off of Railroad is what happens at the end of School Street.
Right, right.
And you've got buses trying to turn left on the School Street and you've got the trucks parked outside Dunkin' Donuts and you've got parents trying to go and take their left.
They're gonna be parked down Dunkin' Donuts anyhow.
Right, and, but it's a very narrow street, that's his point.
They're gonna be, they're gonna come in off of Union now and they're gonna park. So, it's gonna be even worse. If they come in off of Center and they're on that side of the road, at least the bus can make a turn.
So, you're in favor of one-way just in the other direction?
No way. I, I want a both ways. I, I leave, I'm at 17 School Street. I can't go diagonally across my street to get gas at Pride. I gotta go all up to Park, Main, all the way around a block to go to the gas station.
Do we have those emails from the chief with his information? I don't-
Yeah.
I just wanted to re-read.
Now, the people that are concerned, I, I talked to two ladies today and they're, they're concerned about safety of the kids and all that.
Thanks.
And I said to them, I said, "Well, you don't take the kids out of the car on the, on the street side, do you?" And she says, "No, but it's when I go to get out of the car." And I'm saying, "Well, I see that on Union Street all the time. Flip the door open. Don't look. You mustn't do that." They don't look. If you don't look, you're, you're, you're gonna, I don't care what one of the traffic's going, you're gonna be hurt. But I'm just saying, I'm opposed, I cannot be more opposed to this.
Everybody would be careful, more careful.
I cannot be more opposed to this.
I thought you brought up a valid point about how many cars we're actually talking about. Was anything done about that?
I mean, if I've seen an increase in my car traveling, I'm sure it's increased there.
Right.
Well, an increase there the minute they put Dunkin' Donuts. And there was no question then. And it's been like that for how many years?
Hello, it's Dunkin' Donuts right there?
I'm just gonna listen.
That's fine.
You know, so now all of a sudden it's a problem? Who, who created the problem? The parent that doesn't pay attention? The problem's always been there.
Right, so, I agree with you, there's a problem. So, what we're trying to, is try to solution whether this is it or not. That's why we're having this conversation.
I mean, the problem is the parent that doesn't pay attention getting out of a car.
And even for me, like I see-
They're on sidewalks, I mean-
But, Mr. Torri, I think we could create safer situations.
Okay, we knock down Cricket's house and Marion's house and make parking.
I don't know who they are.
There are two people that passed away this year. There's two empty houses on School Street. And it'd be ideal for downtown parking. Now, if safety is really concerned, there's an option. Now, that one costs money. The city doesn't wanna spend money on parking. But couldn't CPA funds be used for that? If they can be used to, for a toilet up at downtown park for $360,000, you would think they'd be able to use it for safety for parking.
Those seem to be like other issues.
Well, let's, let's, let's make it a park with parking.
It seems like Railroad Street's a little bit more straightforward because that's an issue of us getting emergency vehicles out. School Street might, I would like to maybe with the chief, go to School Street-
Site visit.
And take a look, like, maybe we need to look at things like no left turn, parking, those types of things on School Street. And is a one-way street necessarily the best answer? And maybe it is.
Yeah.
But maybe, what I, I would like to do is look at the conditions on the ground with the chief and, you know-
I'd like to be there when you do it.
And you're welcome to.
I also think-
Yeah.
I also think the time restrictions should be on the table because that is something that people do, like they's-
Oh, it's totally standard.
It's absolutely standard. I mean, is it-
I mean, we have time restrictions on the parking on Maple Street.
Is it a little bit more difficult and tricky and does it have to be the police? Like, yes, maybe, but-
Only during certain periods.
It's a good compromise if there's a lot of conflict about how-
Especially on School Street because really it only needs to be one-way when we're dealing with buses.
Right. And I don't think that's an uncommon thing. I mean, I've definitely seen schools-
Did I make this, the trucks that they're concerned with when the school buses are making their turn? Those are probably 90% by Pride up in the street there. Make that no parking.
See, I think that it makes sense for us to look at all the different factors, like no parking, no left turn.
And, and that's kind of what I'm saying, like seeing the emails from the chief, like not being able to have a conversation with him, not being able to have a conversation with Joe, like-
This has been on our agenda since July. This is really tough, just for the record.
Yeah.
And if you're gonna make it no parking, put those yellow lines. Don't just put a sign up, put the-
Yeah, the paint.
The painted signs.
People ignore that. I see it all the time.
Especially with loading and unloading.
It's easier to give them a ticket though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they're parked in the line.
All right, so, the other thing that I think we ought to do is maybe we divvy up these two streets and treat them as two separate requests. Unless they're, that's already reflected on the agenda.
Hmm.
The, your original request was to do them together.
I would rather see them apart because I think Railroad Street is a much easier sell. Doesn't affect their business at all. They're gonna still have all their parks.
I agree with you. I would be ready to put forward a public hearing for Railroad Street. But School Street I'd like to do a site visit.
I think it's worth, if we're gonna put off one, I think it's worth putting off both and just having the conversation with the Chief of Police and the DPW Director, who saw these as one way to kind of transform that whole neighborhood together.
So, they're a pa, they're a package deal, like?
So, we're gonna-
If, if we decide against School Street, you don't think-
Logistically, there's nothing keeping us from treating these as, you know, we can, dealing with one now and, and keeping the other one on our agenda. There's, there's like-
No, I'm just speaking to Carrie's point of, I'm making sure, because it has been one month since July, if we can move one forward.
Maybe they don't want us to move one forward without the other, you know, so.
My, from my conversations with them, it was the idea of making School one-way towards Center that brought the idea of bringing Railroad one-way the other direction into like, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't want to split them up. But it might be worth.
Oh, the way Railroad Street was described is it was to help the public safety.
Right.
So, um, so maybe we just, let's, let's set, let's set a meeting with the chief and, and go take a look at the, and just have our next meeting be on School Street.
Let's do this, yeah, site visit, announce it, try and get some more public involvement. I mean, this is a big deal.
Yeah, well, and I would-
Again, you know, Dan and I talked about it, like-
You're not gonna get a lot of public involvement because it's such a small street and I'm-
But there's all these people driving to Pride.
On School, on School Street, there's four houses. Two of them are dead.
Oh.
So, you got me and one other person. How many people do you think are gonna come to us?
All those people cutting to Pride.
Yeah.
Dave?
I hope.
Well, I mean, there, there are people that are, would, would be invested because they use-
You're the first one that's- I didn't even know about.
You're the first one that's coming two and a half months, so.
I didn't know, really, it's really-
So-
Not on that, on my area.
Yeah, I wanna rush it.
So, does that seem like a reasonable plan to, because I think if we go there, we can take a look at, like, maybe we take a broader look. Look at the parking, look at maybe a no-left turn, look at, you know, an hours base, you know, between the hours of bus drop-off and bus pickup, it's one-way. And we enforce that for, you know, a few weeks and people just get used to it. I mean, listen, in Cleveland, they actually make entire main arteries one-way at certain times and it works.
You're gonna put a sign up with the sign.
Yeah, just like we do on Maple Street where we say, "No parking between this time and this time."
Right.
I mean, granted, yes, if you're a ding-dong, it's gonna be confusing.
It would probably be when you say ding-dong.
I did, I would never put it to you, but, but because you said people would get confused. That's why I was pointing.
The chief's point to me was, it'd be, people get confused, people from out of town, people's, you know, there's, you could be more, asking for more accidents by doing that.
Potentially. I, I, I don't think necessarily it's that, but I'm not a traffic expert. So, um, let's just, let's do that for our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll second that, so.
Yep, motion, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
So, we will, we have to check with the chief.
Joe there as well.
But we have your email, so Counselor Hayes will email you and let you know the time of the date.
Are you friendly with your neighbor? You don't have to answer that kind of one.
The dead ones? The one that's, what I'm, it's the dead ones. The other neighbor, I don't know him.
Okay.
She, she goes to work, I go to work at different schedules.
I was gonna say, if you knew her, if you knew her more.
I put a note in her mailbox today because I don't, I, I don't think she knows.
Oh, thanks for doing that.
And I-
I went to the whole neighbor.
Joe's schedule and I was thinking, well-
Yeah, and I do know that we have-
Were you not addressing that?
No, I mean, in the end, I, you know, I can also sort of pass the information along so we can kind of start thinking about, you know, kind of like what you guys are doing and just sort of brainstorming.
Now, those Pride's, Dunkin' Donuts truck, I don't think they come in at those times.
I don't know their schedule. We could check with them.
But I, I'm sure that Pride and Dunkin' Donuts would work around it. So, I don't know, which way those trucks come in.
They could probably, yeah, probably have a meeting, but, so, we do have one other thing on agenda, right? But these guys are in here at 6:30, so we should, is that something that, do we even know the specifics of that yet?
No, and I'm really confused with that because we followed the process, we did a public hearing, the DPW okayed everything. And then when I followed up, because I'm like, listen, it's been a year, like, these are all our notes from the other day. When is, when is this actually gonna happen on Pleasant Street?
Oh, Pleasant Street.
Pleasant Street?
Yeah.
But that, I don't think that's what's, our agenda is, our agenda item is-
The language for the Pleasant Street signs.
Is it now? Is it for Pleasant Street?
Yeah.
I thought it was just like parking inconsistencies or something.
It's not just Pleasant Street.
Yeah.
It's, anywhere there's a parking limit, 15:00 and only 30:00, and only one hour. And it's, some of those are on Pleasant Street, but it comes this number of streets.
So, basically, just going through and making some edits.
Well, the only edit, the requesting-
I have three seconds.
We got, we got one minute.
Dan can go downstairs if you can, Steve.
Yeah, that's fine.
The only edit they're requesting is in that first paragraph. It says, "No person shall park or allow vehicle to remain standing upon the following streets or portions of streets for longer period of time than is here and specified. These restrictions shall apply and be effective at all times between the hours of 7:00 AM and 6:00 PM, except on Sundays and legal holidays when they shall not apply and except on Fridays when they shall apply and be in effect from 8:00 AM, instead of 7:00, to 9:00 PM, instead of 6:00." And so, what Patty's saying to us is, we want to print these new signs, but it's, uh-
That's too complicated.
You've got certain things for Sundays, something else for holidays, something else for Fridays.
Right.
And no one could find when these were, you know, what the rationale was for why this Friday parking needs to be enforced for these extra two hours.
Right, so I actually brought the minutes from when we did that site visit where we talked about, we put down like all those different sections and talking with people to try and reverse engineer what our thinking was on that.
This, this is not something we wrote. This is a, this is in the rules already.
Right, these are our minutes from when we walked up and down the street just to kind of refresh our memories to why we ended up with information like that. Because, like I said, we did go through the process, we went to the public hearing, DPW read that, gave us their endorsement. And now, you know, following up, like, when is this gonna happen? It's like, oh, now it's back to us because it, now, now it's not okay. I don't know why it was approved by DPW if this was such a-
We did not amend this section.
Oh.
No, we did not do-
This is not the-
This is a general, this is like the general, like, parking restrictions.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, which which, but the preamble sets the rules for the city.
Gotcha.
So these aren't like the specific fifteen minute ones.
So this is any fifteen minute parking spot in the city, any half an hour only parking spot in the city.
Yeah.
They can, so that, those tiny restraints are in effect. One day to Saturday, except Friday, seven AM to six PM, and Friday, eight AM to nine PM. And so what the DPW is asking us to do is leave it if that's what we want.
Or simplify it.
But simplify it, so it's, you know, seven days a week, seven AM to six PM, except Sundays, something.
That sounds perfect, I like that.
I'm sorry to interrupt you guys, but I have a huge group meeting.
Okay.
Could, will it fit in the downstairs conference room? I don't know, it's like a meeting, it's just a big meeting, but.
Well, I mean, I think we're pretty close here, right, do we wanna?
Can you schedule this, uh, can you schedule this by the way, six o'clock?
Uh. Yeah, this is a six minute.
We'll try to move them, if you guys have more. This is our last item, if you.
Maybe, it shouldn't take too much longer, I mean, I think, a few minutes, just like, yeah.
Two minutes? We'll see if they're okay.
Cause I I feel like we're getting close, I feel like Dan just said what we, the regulations to be.
Yeah. And the whole thing is like, over a year.
They sound really, they sound really simple, they sound really simple and easily enforceable.
Right.
Right, Monday through Friday. Like, what, what do you say, nine to six?
So the, the time restrictions apply Monday through Saturday, seven AM to six PM.
Except Sundays.
And that, we're gonna say except Sundays, we'll just leave Sunday out of it.
Yeah, just leave Sunday out of it, and holidays out of it, because it's implicit. And that's easy to print on the sign.
When was the last time you wrote a parking ticket?
Like, anywhere?
In town.
Probably every week, at least.
I mean, we, yeah, we, I mean, we generate a couple, you know, a decent amount of money through parking tickets.
What do you do like a week?
I mean, it kind of depends on if it's, sometimes it's based on complaints, or some, like, someone will call, and there's a car illegally parked. Or there's other places, like specifically on Main Street, right by the Rotary by Silver School there, that parking area typically, because it's the two o'clock to five AM timeframe. A lot of times, there'll be a car or two that people just leave there overnight, so, there are a couple places that are sort of just reoccurring, people just don't, they're just gonna park there. And then there's other towns where there are cars.
But this particular infringement, ring any bells for you?
Like, the time ones are not as, usually aren't as big of issues, like, there there's the one right across from Jerry's Package Store, is one of the fifteen minute ones. Typically, people aren't hanging out there very often, I mean, now that there are businesses and a lot of more people are going to Eastworks and going in there. Potentially, that might become an issue, I guess, but.
Well, that sign is gone, that sign doesn't exist in in the ordinance anymore.
Right.